Good evening. Before I start tonight's meeting, I'd like to just call for a moment of silence for Mr. Jim Rooney, also former Officer Rooney and former selectman, fellow selectman. Before I start the meeting, I just wanted to say that Chairman Newhouse was unable to attend tonight, and I'm just filling in for the one night tonight. Okay. I'd like to start the meeting with transmitting of Treasury warrant, eight, eight-eight, nine, nine-eight, ten, ten-eight, eleven, eleven-eight.
Motion so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? I'd like to do approval in the minutes, May 11th, 2009, May 26th, 2009, June 8th, 2009. Do I have a motion? Excuse me, June 22nd, 2009, and August 17th, 2009.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? I'd like to start the first appointment tonight. Brian E. Smith, Engineering Project Manager, Redding Municipal Light Department, public hearing relative to request of Redding Municipal Light Department to place one pole on Lake Street.
I'm Brian, and I'm filling in for Brian tonight.
Could you repeat your name again?
Vaughn Brian. I'm filling in for Brian tonight.
If you'd like to just give us a little information, what you're here for on the pole?
Yeah. We're here to locate a new pole, eight and a half, Lake Street, approximately 63 feet southwesterly from existing pole nine, located approximately 637 feet southwesterly from Grove Avenue centerline, and approximately 129 feet northeasterly from existing pole eight on the northwesterly side of Lake Street.
Can we just clarify, Mr. Bryant, that the pole number is eight and a half, the actual location on Lake Street? Do you have the actual location on Lake Street?
That's actually one...
Is it 155?
155 Lake Street, Jack's Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Any of the board members have any questions?
Out of curiosity, Mr. Chairman, what is happening in that area that requires this new pole? We have some schematics here, and I'm not familiar with this territory here, so my question is asked really just out of curiosity. It shows a couple of existing poles, number eight, number nine, number 10. We're calling this pole number eight and a half at that corner of Lake and Jacques Lane. What's happening currently in that area with regards to whatever this pole will be carrying? In other words, why is it necessary?
This is a new development, and we usually require about three risers on a pole. Seeing that the current pole is going to have both the rise and cable harness on it, we just require a second pole. Just we can have both of our risers on each side. Just to help the pole, just in case, the pole needs to be changed out or anything. It's a lot more difficult when you have four risers on one pole. In addition to that, the development will get two feeds, just in case they lose power. If that pole is like on a corner, and if it gets hit or anything, they can be fed from the second pole during winter time, just to keep the power source on.
When you say four risers, help me understand. Are these the cross braces?
No, no. This is an underground development.
Okay.
And so everything is going to be fed underground. So you're going to have the electric company, the cable company, and the telephone company already on there. And we have a loop feed for underground development, which requires two risers. So instead of having four risers on a pole, a second pole is added, and then the electric company will feed from two different locations off around Lake Street.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the information. It's just, as I say, it's new information for me, and just a better, clearer understanding is always helpful.
Any other board members, any questions? Anybody from the public? You'd like to state your name and...
My name is Vaughn McDougall. I live at 156 Lake Street, across the street from Development. I have one question. I want, just so that I'm clear, is the pole to be located on the same side of the street of Lake Street as the existing poles?
That's correct.
On the... Okay. I just want to know if it's on the north or the south side.
No, it's going to be on the same side as the existing poles in Jackson.
On the corner where Jacques will go in.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
It would just make people want to see the plan.
Would you like to see any of the plan on that, Mr. McDougall?
Is there one? Yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
It was a visibility thing I was concerned about. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else, any other questions? No? Okay. I guess, do I have a motion on... Do you want to make any requests?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the request by Redding Municipal Light relative to the one pole on Lake Street.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. And I guess our 7:10 meeting is going to be Shelley Newhouse, Health Director, and Jane Williams-Veil, MD, Board of Health, Seasonal and H1N1 Flu Clinic. Good evening, ladies.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
So first, I wanted to talk to you guys about the seasonal flu and the flu clinics that we're preparing for to have this fall. Our first flu clinic is going to be on September 23rd, and it's a school-located seasonal flu clinic. It's going to be just for school-aged children from kindergarten through grade 12. It's going to be from 12 to 3 at the Boltwell Street School. That's a half a day. The school nurses will be there to provide shots. It's free of charge, and the flu vaccine will be by injection. The ad, it was just posted today on the Wilmington Public Schools website, as well as our website, and will be in the papers this week. This clinic is something that the town has never done before, provided before for kids. But the recommendations from the Mass Department of Public Health and with the cooperation from the school department, it's just something that we feel we're trying to get as many people as we can vaccinated this seasonal flu season. Because our ultimate goal is to really reduce the risk of becoming ill with the seasonal flu. The school nurses, Doreen Crowe, the school nurse leader, and the superintendent, and Judy Bags, our public health nurse, have really done a great job in putting this whole flu clinic together. So this is our first flu clinic that we're holding. We received a special allotment from the Mass Department of Public Health just to hold this flu clinic for kids. It's 375 doses that we have, and that's, so far, that's all we have for seasonal flu vaccine. So I don't know, do you guys have any questions on the first, this first clinic for kids that we're having?
Could you explain, when we say for kids, we're talking about the age group that we're talking about?
Yeah. Kindergarten through 12th grade, so roughly five years of age through 18 years of age and older.
And you note that Shelley mentioned that we have 375 vaccines, which is about 10% of our Wilmington School Department population, and when you're talking about kids from that age group, it's even lower than that. It's probably 7 and 1/2 percent or 8 percent. So we're still encouraging these young people, and I'm sure Dr. Veil can speak to it later, but we're certainly encouraging these young people and their parents to avail themselves of other avenues to get the shot. And I suspect that many of them will go to their own pediatricians for the vaccine, but this is a start. We have this many doses, and we are going at this rate because, as Shelley said, the public... And I think this is important to make this point, because I know so many, in the past, our first effort was with seniors and then a general population, but we are being told that the target group is this age group. And this is a directive from the Department of Public Health. So this is what we're going to try to do, and all the instructions and forms that need to be filled out. Shelley, maybe you can speak to that, that people have to get the form to get permission slips.
Download form, permission slips that have to be signed and filled out. There's a small screening questionnaire as well that parents will have to fill out, and they can all bring to the flu clinic on that day, just to make it easier for everyone, just to get their shot.
And if parents have questions, are they being directed to contact?
They can contact the school nurses. Any of the school nurses will be glad to answer any questions, or they can call the Board of Health if they want to.
And the forms are on the school website?
Forms are on the school website. They're posted on the Board of Health website as well. Our townwide clinics. Our hope is to have a seasonal townwide flu clinic on a Saturday in early October. We have tentative dates scheduled right now, but where we don't have the vaccine yet, I'm hesitant to actually schedule a day. I want to make sure that we actually have our vaccine in-house. As soon as it becomes available, we'll have, we'll schedule our townwide flu clinic. So I'm hearing it should be available shortly. I mean, I could hear anything, you know, every day. Something changes every day. Flu shots this year, there's a priority group that we're encouraging people to get shots, and those are children aged six months through their 19th birthday. However, you know, anyone under the age of five, we'd like to encourage them to go to their pediatrician to get shots. You know, like I said, from the kindergarten to up through 18, you can come to the Boltwell Street School on that day to get your flu clinic, as well as they can come to the townwide clinic if they wanted to. Pregnant women are encouraged to come to the townwide flu clinic and get a flu shot. People 50 years of age or older. People with chronic health problems, like asthma, diabetes, or heart disease, and those people that, those household contacts that care for them as well, and all healthcare workers. So those are the priority groups that we're really encouraging to come and get their flu shots. But it's also, the Board of Health recommends that everyone get their annual seasonal flu shot. You know, it's recommended for all persons who want to reduce their risk of becoming sick with the seasonal flu. Our hope is to have one flu clinic, and if all goes well, we can certainly hold more if the vaccine allotment allows for us to do that. Any questions on seasonal flu?
Can I ask you both? That key word, if I may.
Yeah.
The allotment. How does that get designated within each community? In other words, how does DPH determine?
It's a population-based.
Okay.
Last year, we received roughly about 1,400 doses, but we also distribute some of those doses to private providers. But this year, it's different. This year, the whole allotment that we get is our own, so you don't have to provide any to any private providers. And the first allotment that we're getting for the schools is separate from the original, our original 1,400 doses. It's give or take, you know, maybe a few hundred, but that's how it works. It's population-based. So each town gets a certain amount, just based on their previous year's reporting of how many doses they gave out. I think last year, we gave out close to 800, and then the rest goes to private providers.
Shelley, on the time again, can you just elaborate? Like, when you say to come in, is there going to be just strictly a certain date, or can they come in pre-ahead by making a call to, you know, the public nurse, or how would they go along?
Our seasonal flu clinics, it's going to be held on a Saturday this year. We've never had a flu clinic on a Saturday. We've always held them, you know, in the afternoons and into the early evenings. But really, we want to give the opportunity to have a long time span for people to come in, so we're going to do it probably from 9:00 in the morning to maybe 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. And it's not by appointment, it's just first come, first served. You just get in line and wait and get your shot. And we're going to do it here at the Town Hall.
And for publicizing, will we be on the website? Are we going to advertise on the local paper?
Yes. As much advertising as I can get out, I'd like to get out, so that, you know, I can really make it public that people should come and get their seasonal flu shot, especially those priority groups. We want to encourage those priority groups to come and get their flu shot.
Sounds like you two are very efficient along with the Board of Health as far as getting your...
It's been a busy flu season, I'll tell you.
The frustration, Mr. Chairman, is in that we don't know when we're going to get that next allotment. And in fact, last, early last week, we had planned a date, and I think it was either Thursday or Friday that Shelley came in to see me and said, "We've just heard from the State Department of Public Health, and they told us, 'Do not publish a date at this point, because we can't guarantee you when you're going to get it.'" And so that puts us into a difficult position, but when you ask when it's going, you know, how it's going to be publicized. If we find out in time, it'll go in Town Topics, which goes out to every property owner. You know, we'll put it on the Rotary Board, we'll put it on the website, we'll put it in the newspapers as soon as, you know, as soon as we find out. But we're, I mean, you've probably been reading about it in the newspapers. Now, the difference is, people then ask, you know, "Why can they get it at Walgreens or CVS?" Or, you know, well, they're out there, they're buying that, and then they're selling it. Our goal, obviously, is to receive our allotment that we're entitled to as a community, as a public health community, and then distribute it free of charge. But just as we've recommended to folks with youngsters to go to their pediatrician's offices, we're recommending the same thing with others. If they have an opportunity to get the flu vaccine, they should get it. If they can get it from their own provider, they really, they really are encouraged to do that, because I don't think we know how many ultimately we're going to get, and we don't know when we're going to get it.
Exactly.
Okay.
You may have seen some other towns out there that have already posted their flu clinics. You know, they may have purchased vaccine. Initially, you know, we received this 375 doses, and other towns receive a first allotment as well, but we're offering our first allotment for a school-located clinic. So other towns might keep that and start off with doing a different clinic. Onto H1N1, my favorite topic. H1N1 is sometimes referred to as the swine flu, so that if you hear that, we like to call it H1N1, not the swine flu. It's a new influenza virus that's causing illness in people. I like to think that H1N1 vaccine is mysterious, because things change every single day. I had a whole nice thing prepared to talk to you guys about, and then I got word that all these different things are changing. I heard this weekend that adults may only have to get one dose, one shot. That looks to be promising, but the clinical trials aren't done yet, and when they're done, time will tell whether adults only need one shot. I'm not sure about children. I think I've heard that children may still have to get two shots.
Yeah, there's still many to...
But we're not sure. I also heard today that, late today, that the word was that we were going to get the H1N1 vaccine allotment probably late October, mid to late October, but the clinical trials are going so well that we may have it sooner than that. They're saying now, early to mid-October. So instead of planning for H1N1 clinics later, we can start planning for them a little bit sooner. There are certain groups, though, that are recommended to have the H1N1 vaccine. There's just, you know, not everybody should be getting the H1N1 vaccine. We can certainly encourage it, but there are priority groups that should only get the H1N1, and those are pregnant women. They're just at higher risk for complications, and the H1N1 vaccine can potentially provide protection to their unborn children. Household contacts and caregivers for children younger than six months of age. So if you have an infant at home younger than six months, you should get the H1N1 shot if you're the primary caregiver. Healthcare workers and emergency workers, any personnel that work in a healthcare setting, they should get the H1N1 shot. And all people from six months through 24 years of age. This virus seems to be hitting that age group more than it's hitting anyone over the age of 60. There seems to be some sort of immunity that's been granted to people who are over the age of 60 because of the swine flu years ago. That's what I'm hearing, if I'm correct. Young adults aged 19 through 24 years of age, we'd like to see all of them get vaccinated. So as soon as we get our H1N1 vaccine, we're going to be holding clinics similar to the school-located clinics for the seasonal flu. That way, we can target the school-aged kids. It depends on whether or not we need, they need two vaccines, then we'll hold two clinics. If it's two vaccines, they have to be about 21 to 28 days apart, and we'll try to schedule that as convenient as possible for everyone. If our allotment allows and we have leftovers, we're going to open up a townwide H1N1 clinic for anyone to come get it, if they need it. But we're really going to focus our vaccine distribution on those, that priority population group. And after that, we'll open it up, like I said, to the town. All the supplies, everything that's needed to run the H1N1 clinics will be provided for by the state. That includes syringes and just anything that you can think of, so the town wouldn't have to purchase anything to run an H1N1 clinic. All the staffing's being provided for by our Medical Reserve Corps. I've already been in contact with a lot of them. They're volunteer nurses. They're going to come out and volunteer for these H1N1 clinics to give shots out. So I encourage anyone out there who wants to join the Medical Reserve Corps, now is a good time, because we need volunteers more than ever to help. I mean, we could potentially be looking at, you know, holding eight clinics, and I need staffing for each of those. New information, it really just becomes available every single day. It's just changing. I go to meetings at least once a week on the changes, and as they're given to me, we just plan for it. We've been in small meetings with the school department, with the town manager, with our nurse leaders, just planning flu clinics and working out the details, and as soon as we have the vaccine available, we can implement it all, and hopefully, it will all just go smoothly. Any questions on H1N1?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. I'm glad to see that you're on top of that. I mean, I know you're saying H1N1, but when you turn on the news in the morning time, basically, the lead story is the swine flu, and I know the President is trying to, the stimulus money is trying to actually get these doses to the whole country, so I would hope to thank that, and I know that's the case, I'm glad to hear it. We're talking, having multiple times to have this if it comes available, because that's what I hear out there while I'm out in the public. All you hear about is the swine flu, and, you know, they're talking, it could be someone, you're the doctor, I'm not, and you know better than I, but, you know, there's talking there's potentials of many deaths out there to this, and we're not trying to scare the community, obviously, but, you know, when you, that's all you hear about is the swine flu. You hear about that constantly, so I'm just glad to see that we're on top of that, because I know I'm concerned, and a lot of folks are concerned, because we're dealing with something that we never, it's a new virus.
So far, it has presented itself this year, luckily, as a mild illness.
Right. It's been very mild around, except for the initial cases in Mexico, the rest of the cases of H1N1 infection have been relatively mild. Just to put things in perspective, seasonal influenza in the United States alone kills about 100,000 people a year, and most people don't realize that. And so that's why it's really important that the United States is starting to understand that we really should vaccinate, you know, larger age groups. In Australia, for example, they immunize all their children, and they don't immunize the adults, because children are the carriers for this, most of these influences. But again, the H1N1 flu is mild, but for those who are at higher risk, it's really important for them to get the vaccine. So, and there will continue to be deaths from it from people who don't have any risk factors, so it's really, it's a balance between knowing what your risk factors are, knowing who you're going to be around, and knowing whether or not you should get the H1N1 if it does become available and you're not part of that high-risk group. But it's important for those that are in the high-risk groups to really get that vaccine.
Thank you. And when you say high-risk, other than the age groups you've mentioned, is the people with chronic...
Yep. Chronic medical conditions. If anyone has, besides asthma, people with COPD, people with heart failure, people with diabetes, I mean, those are chronic illnesses. People who, in general, don't fall into the 50 and older age group, but who have medical conditions where they're supposed to get the seasonal flu vaccine, they should also be getting the H1N1 vaccine.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. One is about reactions that an individual or a person may have after receiving the shot. Is there, are there any potential negative effects that people might experience from receiving either the traditional seasonal flu or the, we don't know much about the H1N1 flu vaccine yet, but, you know, is there any concerns about that, or what might people expect?
In general, for any vaccine, the most common reaction, if someone is going to have a reaction, is a local reaction, so that in adults, it's going to be the deltoid muscle, the arm muscle, where you could have hotness or warmth. If the reaction becomes really severe in terms of a lot of pain, or a lot of heat, or a lot of redness, you would contact your provider, your healthcare provider for that. But most people have no ill effects from the flu vaccine. There are certainly some people who, within 24 hours, start to feel flu-like symptoms, a little bit of achiness, and a lot of people say, "Oh, I got the flu from the flu vaccine." But you can't actually get the flu from the seasonal flu vaccine, because you're getting bits and pieces of the vaccine, and there's no way your body can reconstitute those bits and pieces to give you the flu. So what you're, what people are finding when that happens is they're actually just feeling their body's immune response starting to kick in. And so for them, that's just their body's way of saying, "Hey, look, there's something foreign. Let's do something about it." So the vaccine is actually working. Again, those who are allergic to eggs, or have had previous reactions, adverse, bad reactions to the flu vaccine, are those seasonal flu vaccine, are those people who shouldn't get the seasonal flu vaccine or the H1N1? I think they're being grown in embryos, egg cultures as well.
A follow-up question to that is, if one starts to feel like, "Uh-oh, I'm coming down with the flu," I think we've all heard the advice, and if you want to repeat it, maybe it's, I don't think you can hear it too many times, so I'll let you expand on that in just a moment. But is there any way that one can say, "Oh, I think I got the H1N1," or, "I think I got seasonal flu"? Are there differences in sensation between the two?
No, you can't, unless you get tested, there's no way to know which influenza you have. Right now, what's circulating, and people can go online, it's cdc.gov, and you can see what's circulating. Right now, what's circulating at this moment is H1N1. So if you get flu-like symptoms, fever, sore throat, runny nose, aches, most likely, you have H1N1. Seasonal influenza usually doesn't really kick in until October-ish, November-ish, and really, in the northeast, around December and January. So if you have those symptoms right now, most likely, or you had it a few weeks ago, most likely, you had H1N1. But the key, of course, for any illness is to really keep yourself isolated. Because of the mildness of the H1N1 and the mildness of seasonal flu, unless you're so sick you can't keep down liquids, or you're just lethargic, you can't get up, or children are, you know, they're just like a rag doll, there's no reason to visit your doctor. So, and there's no reason to be tested either. Yeah. And that's a great question.
If you are sick prior to having an opportunity to get the vaccine, what is your response there? Do you still recommend getting the vaccine?
I do. If you're in a high-risk group, I would still recommend getting the vaccine, either, you know, for children, seasonal and the H1N1 vaccines.
So even if you've had the flu, or you're experiencing flu-like symptoms, if there's an opportunity to get the vaccine, you should get the vaccine?
You should. The only contraindication for, so the only reasons not to get the vaccine is if you actually have a fever greater than 100.5, and some sources say 101, on the day that you would be getting the vaccine. But if you have a sniffly nose, or a little bit of a cough, or sneezing, you can certainly come in and get the vaccine.
And what are we going to do, Dr. Veil or Shelley, at the clinic, if somebody presents themselves a child, for example, that appears to you to be sick? Will the nurse take the temperature or... Will the nurse take the temperature prior to giving them the vaccine?
We're going to have medical screeners at the flu clinics. So they'll go through the line, and they'll screen people. There's a series of questions that they'll ask. Because a lot of people, for a lot of kids, it may be the first time that they're coming to this sort of a clinic to get a shot. So we're going to have medical screeners, sort of like a triage, where they're going to go through and talk to them and see. And if we have to exclude them from getting a shot, we can do that. And we'll encourage them to go to their own physician later when they're feeling better.
Any other questions?
It's a busy upcoming season.
Yes, I'd like to ask the doctor and Shelley particularly about restaurants. I've been to three different things, and the Board of Health has, here in Wilmington, has presented at the Senior Center, two Nurse Judy. A couple of clinics already, and one of the things that she brought out and said, "That's a senior center." And I think this is going to apply for schools, too. I just want you to clarify. If you have a fever and you have a cough, it's best for you to stay home and not go to the senior center or go to school. Keep your child at home. Now, if one issue came, and I would like for you to address it, one issue came up in one senior got very, said, "Well, what do you mean, they're going to quarantine people?" Well, I can remember smallpox, when my, I believe we were the first ones to get smallpox shots, and my mother and father got it. I believe, like what happened in Washington State, there were 900 students that got the HIV, the flu, and they took an old dormitory and did quarantine. But again, you said about the lightness of, they were out in three days. It wasn't like, you know, they had nurses and doctors and everything. But Shelley, the thing I want to ask you is about restaurants. And the way that they handled the food, there are those cellophane gloves and everything, but particularly, we were at, I was someplace today, and it was mentioned about Dunkin' Donuts, where a girl was really coughing and had a runny nose, and, you know, what do you, I mean, what are you going to do about that? I mean, are you going to restaurants? And have you asked them to please let their employees go home? I know on the news it says, "Let your employees go home," you know, or what, how are we handling that here?
Well, I think it would be impossible for me to visit every single public place in the town and reiterate, I think, what's out there for education, which is, if you're sick, if you have, you're presenting with flu-like illness, you should stay home. You shouldn't be at work, you shouldn't be at school. You should stay home until you don't have any symptoms. I'm just trying to get out with education that you have to wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, and avoid close contact with people. I think it's been out there enough in the media that people know that. And, you know, as we go along, and I can only offer education to people. I've been talking to large businesses in town that have asked me questions about flu clinics and what can I do. And next month, I'm actually speaking at the Rotary Club about what businesses can do during this flu season to prepare. What should they do? Should they allow their people to be at work? Should they send people home? So we're just going to be basically focusing on education to get the word out there.
The only other comment that I have is that there are two places in town now that I was in this week, to Burger King. And not a plug for them, but they have put up the, like, the same things that are in hospitals, where you can, you know, where you wash your hands. And I have paid, these were given out, and I brought one for each of the selectmen through Shelley's office, that what to do. And I'd like to give each of you one of them, if that's all right with you, Shelley. And the fact that at Burger King, I pass these out and both at Demola's, and they're reprinting by, and handing them, and they're going to put them in bags. They will be helping you that way. I don't know if John told you that. But they're going to be reprinting, and, oh, thank you. They're going to be reprinting those. I was given to them at the seniors, a copy of it. And I think that those kinds of things are very good. Of course, that goes back to my background, PR and the other rest of it. But it is important in restaurants, and Burger King and the Demolas, they don't call them, it's Market Banister, they have even set up so that you can wipe off the handles of the carts. And they also suggest that after you wash your hands, you keep the towel to open the door with as you go out. And I've been, that's easy to do when you wash your hands. And I wish you would address that.
These are very excellent ways to decrease transmission of the virus if you're sick, and excellent ways of preventing yourself from getting sick. It's important, I tell my children when they come home from school to wash their hands, when they're in school, wash their hands before lunch. The great news is that the schools have hand sanitizer in them, the schools have soap and hot water. Children at the schools are learning to, you know, sneeze in their elbows so that they don't spread germs. Cover your cough, which is the document that you passed out, so that when you do cough, you don't get everybody sick. You frequently wash your hands, and if you don't have access to soap and water, you can use a hand sanitizer. I mean, these are all great ways to prevent people from getting each other sick.
And as you know, the selectmen have a copy of the press release that the Board of Health prepared in conjunction with the school department that says all this, that talks about teaching children to wash their hands, not to share personal items, you know, asking parents to keep children at home if they're sick. And so you can see that document either on the public health website, the school department website, or in the newspapers, because the newspapers did print the document, Forest that speaks to all of this. I'm glad you mentioned the hand sanitizer, because through a grant from the Board of Health is providing the schools and also our other public facility buildings, and that's about the only thing we can do. We can't provide them, obviously, to private restaurants and other groups, but we hope that they'll do the same. We've provided them with hand sanitizers in our, and we have in the various restrooms what you usually see in a restaurant, asking folks to remember to wash their hands. That's really what we're encouraging people to do, and I think the Board of Health and the school department are doing a great job on that end.
Mr. Chairman, just to touch upon that, not only being a business owner, owner of a restaurant for 25 years, it's good common sense. I mean, I have a little bit of history, 25 years in the restaurant business. If somebody comes to work sick and they don't look good, last thing I want to do is eat, especially in an open kitchen, drool coming from somebody's nose or doing something like this, I'm never going to go back to that establishment. So it's good business sense to send that individual home, number one. Number two, we have employees that work for us, and they say, "I don't want to get sick." That's individuals sick. So in the history is, we've sent people home, and I'm sure other restaurants and other business owners sent them home, because you don't want to be down. I'd rather be down four, five hours one day than be down two or three people the following day. But it just makes good business sense to do that. And the Board of Health has implemented, just to let you know, and I'm sure that you're aware of it, at one time they used to use hand sanitizer. Now you have to wear gloves. And obviously, owning a business in an open kitchen, everybody wears gloves, and it took a little time.
They wear the cheap gloves up front, yeah, and we wear the expensive gloves in the back, working and doing the cooking. So obviously, and the boxes are exposed, and it's there, and it's a good thing that the Board of Health did implement that, because I think it's, people are aware of that. And if somebody doesn't wear the gloves, people know that you're supposed to wear gloves, and they say, "Jeez, I don't want you to make that sandwich because you didn't wear your glove." I'm saying, that's what people would say. I mean, people in tune to that. So you wear gloves all the time. And we're trying to do, through the Board of Health, good programs, take initiatives to make sure, you want to make sure everyone's safe and healthy, and, hey, I don't want to lose any biz. I want to make sure I get people coming back. Thanks.
I didn't, I just haven't been in your place in a while, and I haven't been at Burger King, and they've gone and bought, and they've got it all set up. So I wasn't just plugging Burger.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Okay. So I know you.
I like the Whopper any day of the week, but, you know.
I'd just like to thank you two ladies for coming in tonight and also helping get the word out. You've done a nice job. It may sound like common sense, but it's always good to reinforce the good common sense.
Yeah, I'd really like to thank, I mean, Joanne Benton, Superintendent, the Town Manager, and all the school nurses. They've really, just planning together, all of us, and everyone's been so cooperative and really just pushing for, you know, whatever we can do, whatever we can do. So it makes it much easier.
Dr. Vale, would you like to add any closing comments? Do you have anything else that you'd like to?
No, again, I think Shelley's doing a remarkable job, and she's getting a lot of great support throughout the community.
Definitely for the, yeah, definitely, she's doing an outstanding job, Board of Health. Very, very good decision.
Right, just one thing, I'd like to reiterate that what Mr. Collins said is very important about going to your primary care doctor and taking advantage of the other clinics. If you have insurance, it's $15, you pay your copay. But if you have an appointment with your primary care doctor, they will give you a shot now.
Any other comments? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us posted, please, you know, as it comes up.
I guess we'll go on to Communications.
Mr. Chairman, before you is the memorandum of decision regarding the Santini Family Inc. Doing Business Sunny's Mobile on the Run versus the Selectmen in the town of Wilmington. As you know, I was pleased to advise you that on September 3, judgment was entered at the Middlesex Superior Court affirming the December 22, 2008 decision of the Town of Wilmington Board of Selectmen denying the application for a transfer and change of location of the all-alcohol liquor license at that location. Judge Wendy Gershengon issued the decision actually on September 1, the notification went out on September 3. And all I can say is that Attorney Deutsch from Town Council's office argued the case on behalf of the town and obviously did a good job in terms of arguing against the motion for summary judgment. And again, the board's decision was affirmed, and I would say that essentially, the judge adopted the Board of Selectmen's position regarding issues of traffic congestion, safety, and location of the floor plan, compatibility, et cetera. At this point, the applicants could appeal the decision. I'm not aware of what their plans are, but I certainly would advise the Board of Selectmen if we hear anything else.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just like to make a quick comment. First of all, I'd like to just say that I'm really glad to see that the court's upheld the decision of the Board of Selectmen. I believe the Board of Selectmen made the right decision. And as the Town Manager said, I think Town Council did an outstanding job litigating the case. And I think the Town Manager, I couldn't have said it more eloquently than the Town Manager did relative to the last press release. I thought he did a good job in conducting it. And I think the board did well on behalf of its residents and its thought-making and its decision. And once again, it shows that the court stood with the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, as you know, we've been doing work from one end of Woburn Street to the other, and we are now going to be resurfacing Woburn Street on that last stretch from Lowell Street to the Woburn City Line beginning Thursday of this week, September 17. The day obviously could be postponed if there's inclement weather or any other kind of scheduling delays. But at this point, we are instructing the paving contractor to begin on that day. Paving operations will likely take about three days. During the resurfacing operations, Woburn Street at that end, you know, again, from Lowell Street down to the Woburn City Line, will be restricted to one-way traffic along various sections of the roadway, again, depending upon where the paving crews are working. We're asking anybody in that area, obviously, to familiarize yourself with alternative routes along Woburn Street such as Industrial Way and Eames Street. And we're asking anyone going in that direction to obey the directors of the police details and the detour signs to assist us in getting the work done expeditiously. The resurfacing consists of a curb-to-curb leveling course, which will improve conditions on Woburn Street in time for the winter months. Once the leveling is complete, granite curbing will be installed on both sides of Woburn Street from Lowell Street to Eames Street. Finished sidewalks will also be installed on the west side of Woburn Street from Lowell Street to Eames Street. This work is planned to be completed during the fall of 2009, and two-lane traffic will be maintained on Woburn Street during both the curbing and sidewalk operations. The final phase of the Woburn Street reconstruction will occur during the spring of 2010, when Woburn Street from Lowell Street to the Woburn City Line will be topped with a final course of finished pavement. Obviously, that's to allow for the settling over the winter. If anybody has any questions, they're welcome to contact the Department of Public Works. Just want to bring to the board's attention the information that we've received relative to the special state election for the position that is now vacant in the United States Senate. The candidates have until October 20 to submit nomination papers to the local registrators of voters for the certification of signatures. And then the certification must be done by October 29. And then from that point, once the candidates get the signatures returned from the local city and town clerks, they have until November 3 to file those nomination papers with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and then to November 6 to withdraw, if that's their position. The key dates, I think, for voters here in Wilmington and the state is that the state primary will be held on December 8, 2009. And we'll have all this information, certainly on the Town Topics and the website and to the local newspapers. But the state primary is December 8. The regular polling locations, the Botwell School, the Wildwood School, and here at Town Hall, will be open on that day from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The last day to register to vote for the state primary will be November 18. And that, we will be open until 8:00 p.m. on that day on November 18 to vote in the state primary on December 8. The state election, the final election, it will be January 19, and the last day to register to vote in the state election, if you're not already registered, obviously, would be December 30. So the key date at this point is if you have not, if you are not registered and you wish to register to vote in this particular election on December 8, you should do so by November Just wanted to provide you with the letter that I've mailed to stakeholders from Wilmington regarding the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange Development Area and specifically Form-Based Zoning. We just notified them that we are embarking on the development of the new Unified Zoning District that is called a Form-Based Zoning, and that is being done specifically for the Interstate Tri-Town Interchange Development Area. I suspect that the managers from the other two communities have also sent a similar letter to property owners from their communities that are within this development area, and we are inviting them, if they want to find out more or to offer suggestions or comments and participate in any way, to contact us and meet on September 22 at a stakeholder interview that will be led by the consultant team on that project, and we'll be doing that here at the Wilmington Town Hall. The Massachusetts Municipal Association has announced their legislative breakfast meetings. And I know in talking with Selectmen Shempui is already scheduled for one of those, and if anybody else is interested in scheduling their attendance at one of these meetings, they can either contact us and we can do it for them, or they can follow the directions that are available. The local meeting in this area will be in North Andover on October 23, the Stevens Estate on Osgood Street. But this is a time when the MMA meets with legislators and others who are interested in going through a discussion on state finances and about what they're going to expect to see for the rest of fiscal year 2010 and beyond. As the board knows, we have been participating in the MMA statewide essay contest As the board knows, we have been participating in the MMA statewide essay contest for sixth graders since its inception. This is the fourth year that the MMA has sponsored this particular initiative. And it promotes, and it intends to promote good local government and encourage young people to learn more about local government and to take an interest in their community activities. Young folks are asked to write an essay that is, "If I were elected a leader of my community, I would make a difference by." And the town has actually had a second-place winner during one of those first three years who met here with the Board of Selectmen. We have great cooperation from Superintendent Joanne Benton and the middle school. And over the last couple of years, I've had the pleasure of joining with Chairman Newhouse to attend a program at the middle school. And I expect we'll be doing that again this year to encourage participation in this program. The board has a letter from John Fulley of the Vice President for Government and Community Relations at Comcast, just informing the board of various business developments relative to customer service in the Town of Wilmington. And what they're essentially telling us is that they are giving a guarantee with the following promise, that there will be a 30-day money-back guarantee in all of services and that they will improve in general their service programs that they offer to their customer base. We also have another piece of correspondence from Comcast from Jane Lyman, the Senior Manager of Government and Community Relations, who, as you know, needs to provide the board of any changes on channel lineups. And she does this as well in a letter that goes to all of the Comcast customers, that on September 13th, the Red Zone, which is part of the NFL Network family of channels, will be added on as the digital channel lineup. A subscription to the sports entertainment package is required to view this channel. That concludes the regular business before the town. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to have any public comments? Ian?
Thank you, Mr. Report. One thing that I wanted to call your attention tonight, it's the 25th anniversary of Wilmington passing a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar override over the renovation of the high school in 1984. This was done with the cooperation, at that time, they called us Sager's Raiders. There were seven women involved. And at the time, there was also, we were in a recession, not a depression, in 1984. I remember my husband being laid off on 1/28 and I waited on tables. I brought in, just, just to say, to remind you that there were Lorna Stockbridge, Sandra Curtin, Cheryl Sodikwitz, Joanne Neal, myself, this public relations liaison. And we also had Diane Allen, who was on the Permanent Building Committee. So we indeed were going to say, we don't need a $55-million-high school. You might correct me, at that time, I believe that was the amount that Mr. Pierce wanted to build on Salem Street. We didn't have that kind of money. And we did remodel and get this, by the way, I talked to Mr. Moselli about it. And I was going to get you some copies today, but you might just be interested in seeing. That's just one of the stories, the full page in the Boston Globe, the Lowell Sun did. But there has not been a override passed in Massachusetts since then. I think that it shows that when people come together and work together, and it certainly was an effort on all our parts and the seniors. It was my part to get the seniors, they needed a building. I came down and did my homework and there was a vacant buil-, building that could be restored. And so that got put on the article at the town meeting. This got put on. And our school and we worked together, we stayed there till 11 o'clock at night with the seniors because our article came up first. That's the type of thing that if we're thinking now, I keep hearing about the parrots here wanting a new school. I don't think we can afford a new school at this time, but I would like to make them aware that there, there's a way of getting things together and maybe something can be done. That's just to remind you of that. I have from time to time at the board, not by any of the members here, been referred to as disingenuous. I guarantee you, I care about the community. I have worked on several committees for a long time, and that's just one of the things I wanted to bring to your mind. The other thing that is very important to me, and I will ask this through you, Mr. Chairman, or however you want to handle it, and it's very simple, the way I felt. Senator Kennedy's death triggered an emotional response in me on August 26, 2009, and all over our country, as well as myself personally. I left my home that morning to go to the senior center around 10:45, and as I drove up the hill, I noticed the flags were not, the flag was not at half-staff. I did come over here and I saw Mr. Kyler casually and he said, "You don't look very good today." And I didn't. I'm not as well as I'd like to be, and I'm in my 78th year. But today I took a rest and I said, "I've got to come down." I guess my question would be, because I did write a service request form and I've never heard anything from it, do we have a policy? Well, I mean, I'm asking this because I did contact the General Laws of Massachusetts, I have those here, and also the White House. And this is what they sent. President Obama, on August 26, 2009, today signed a presidential proclamation ordering American flags on all federal buildings flown at half-mast until sunset August 30th. And it goes on to say that, that ordered, the president also ordered flags to fly at half-mast. Now, what is the policy and what do we do? I would think when, when a senator like that dies, or a president, or his brothers were shot, I think that we do need to lower flags. I noticed that the, where the police are, I know we call it the Safety Building, that flag was lowered. And they're very proud that they did it themselves, I guess. I'm only going to ask now, it was, it was a beautiful thing that, that came out about the respect for a senator of the past half-century, that every, it seems that every major piece of legislation that required, was about civil rights, health, and economic well-being of American people bore his name. The mark of respect for the memory of Senator Edward M. Kennedy is the reason I hereby order, by the authority vested in me, these orders, and let's sign it Barack Obama. I was quite disappointed that it, it took a pound of flesh, but Mr. Kyler did raise the flags. But I think we need to have a policy. And I would ask Mr. Kyler and through the board, do we have a policy for the town? Because when I'm talking with the Commonwealth, they said that the building departments, and I have the law here too, the General Law of Massachusetts, put in a lot of effort on this, that the Buildings Department should have a policy. And when the town manager has discretion, that is, at least was told, I don't, Gavin, Mr. Gavin's office was very nice, has the discretion to make that decision once the president has ordered that. I don't know if we have a policy. And I'm here tonight and I did write and I did not get an answer, and I tried to wait 10 days on, and the question really was, that, do we have a policy? May I please have a policy of the Wilmington regarding jurisdiction of flags of the Commonwealth and the nation? And I'm asking that question tonight because I did not get an answer.
I'd be happy to speak to that, but before I do, the, the earlier statements that Mrs. Linehan made, I just want to make sure, I don't know to what extent the print media or certainly TV is, is writing anything. But with regard to the override, which, which the seven-and-a-quarter-million override initially failed and then a follow-up override did pass back in 1984, the statement was made that it's the only override that has ever passed, that there has never been another override passed.
That's what Mr. Kyler said.
In fact, it was a dead exclusion and there's been other, it was not an override, it's a dead exclusion. And in fact, the very same thing passed here in order for us to build the Public Safety Building and the middle school. And I would dare say there have been hundreds of overrides and dead exclusions passed in the Commonwealth since 1984. So I just wouldn't want that information being written down as gospel. Certainly, you can write it down and attribute it to Mrs. Linehan because she said it, but I would just want to correct that, that misinformation. With regard to the statements that were made that at, the flags were not lowered until Mrs. Linehan got here at 10:45, she was actually here much earlier that morning. And in fact, while she was here, flags at this building were being lowered. And we, we don't have a remote control that enables us to lower every flag at the same time. But we did send out prior, about three hours prior to having received the directive from the state, we actually had the flags lowered before we got the directive from the state. And they may not have been lowered early enough for some residents, but they were lowered that morning prior to even receiving the, the actual directive. The policy that the town has long held, as the board knows, is the same policy that most communities have, and that is that vested in the authority of the chief executive officer, a mayor or a city or a town manager, is the ability to have the flag lowered. We lower the flag when we receive a directive from the President of the United States or from the governor of the Commonwealth, as we did on this past weekend or whenever a serviceman who dies in Iraq or Afghanistan is buried on the day of the funeral, we will lower the flag at half-mast, which is a policy established by the governor. We lower the flag on the day of the funeral for former office holders such as Selectmen Rooney. We lowered the flag on Thursday for Selectmen Rooney. On Friday, we lower the flag without any directive, by the way, but we lowered the flag because we felt it should be lowered on September 11th and, and kept it lowered. So if there is a sitting member of the board of Selectmen or school committee who passes away, we would lower the flag immediately until that individual is buried. We also lower the flag at various locations in town that are germane to where the employee may have worked. And that's where you saw the flag lowered at the Public Safety Building earlier than Thursday because Mr. Rooney was a sergeant there. And that has also been customary. I would do that at a school where a particular teacher might have served. I think our record in terms of lowering the flag at the appropriate time is done. I'm, I'm not going to certainly, well, let me, let me just, just leave it at that. You can't please everybody. But I think that by and large, we probably had the flag lowered the day that we learned that Senator Kennedy died earlier than many, many communities, maybe not as early as some, but earlier than many, and certainly earlier than when we got the actual directive.
Well, I did see the Highway Department, one of the foremen's going out, even on the Glen Road, flagged right there at that common. And I stopped, in fact, and talked to him, and he said from there, he was going to the high school, he was out lowering them personally. And, and again, it was parrot, you know, as the town manager, you sent them out there.
I agree, I agree with that.
It was one man lowering them, but I mean, obviously, he couldn't get to every flag, but they were taken care of. I mean, I personally saw.
May I comment with regard to what Mr. Kyler has said, which I did not bring up? I did preface it with that I was very moved by his death. And then I did come in and saw Mr. Kyler in the hall. And I asked him, "Mr. Kyler, will you please lower the flags?" That was around 10:45. And he said, "No, I have to wait until I hear from the governor." At that time is when the first, I said, "Well, then I will stand out there until that flag is lowered, whatever time it is." And I did stand there. Unfortunately, my blood sugar dropped, but Mr. about, very shortly after that, Mr. Hooper showed up to lower the flag and I, he said, "Anne, let me go get you some water and go sit down." I was in very good shape, but I did stand there until it was lowered. Then the other flags were lowered. I appreciate the fact that they were lowered. And I won't go into the rest of the stuff that happened here that day, but I am not disingenuous, Mr. Kyler. And I have, I'm an old civil rights worker, and I just came in and nicely asked you and you said, "No." And I'm sorry that that happened. I'm glad you have such a good policy. And I, I do want to say that the man has, I think, has done good work for this country. He certainly is not a perfect person, and he said that. And we know that, no one is. But I'm glad that you gave me this opportunity to come before you, and I'm glad that it was done. It takes a lot of effort to get in touch with the right people, but there are things here that do say that the town manager has the choice to do it. And I'm glad that he finally did. Thank you very much.
I just want to say that I stand by my comments. I'm, I'm not going to engage in, in this, but I, I believe we took the appropriate action. And when Mrs. Linehan just said that when she asked me to lower the flags, I said, "No", that is a fabrication of the Tallis order.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to make a comment. I believe that what the manager's saying is very accurate. I was getting a little confused, Ian, when you were saying back in 1984 that ever since the override of the town that there's never been an override. I'm glad the manager clarified that because I've been around for a long time. Let me just finish.
Well, it's a override, I, I, we know it was.
But it was truly a dead exclusion, but to say nowhere in the Commonwealth that happened, it's, it's just, I'm glad he, I was just saying, I'm glad he clarified it, but the bottom line is, it has happened many times and, yeah.
I know how Mr. Kyler feels about Diane and Allen and some of the women in here, but we worked hard on Mrs.
I have nothing but respect for, for Mrs. Allen. And for Mrs. Linehan to characterize that, I would hope that you would rule her out of the order.
I was just going to say, I don't want to get into any.
Because she's certainly not adding anything positive to this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. That was a long time ago.
I don't want to get any more conflicts.
It was written up and spoken of as an override.
Is her husband on the water and sewage?
Right. And I appointed him to the water and sewage commission. He does a great job.
Mike, you'd like to finish up or you all set?
Most of us.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I guess I'll go on to, any other comments?
No.
Okay, the board, Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I know, I just want to bring up something quickly. I don't know, Mike, if we could take an opportunity to look at it, and once we've done it in the past, coming out of the Public Safety Building to Wilmington Center, on the right-hand side of the post office, I know it's been there for years, the mailboxes. And I'm not saying that we could do it, but is there a possibility, I think about 50, 60 feet of that span, if there was a possibility moving in the crib, five or six feet, moving the boxes back, if there's a possibility of that? Because the problem is, it's been happening, I'm sure everyone sees it. When you're pulling out of the, say, the Public Safety Building to Wilmington Center, you want to take a left on Main Street, it's very difficult because it's such a narrow certain area and then it spans wider. I'm just wondering if there's a, we could take some property from the post office area, move the mailboxes back five, six feet, move the sidewalk five, six feet over, about a 60-foot span. We'd seriously move that traffic along Wilmington Center a lot quicker than it's happening now. I don't know if anyone's ever looked at it.
You're talking about like the newspaper boxes and those, you're not talking about the mailboxes themselves?
I'm talking about, well, pretty much, you got folks parking in the street that want to throw the mail in. Well, enough, you know, what I'm saying is, I'd be in favor, to be totally honest, eliminating that. Let them go in the parking lot, put the mailbox, if they can relocate their mailbox. I'm not saying that can happen. It's the federal government, I don't know what say we have, but I'm telling you, if we were to take some initiative and to do something in that area, we'd move the flow of traffic a lot faster, especially when you want to take a left onto Main Street, when you want to go take a left towards, I don't know if we can or.
I think the problem is that the parking lot does not accommodate all of that. And we, we do limit parking in front there to 15 minutes. I mean, if that's the board's direction, you know, I'd be happy to do that, but I think that might create some other problems going in and out of the parking lot. And the board would have to vote to eliminate parking at, at that location. They have the authority to do that, but they'd have to vote to eliminate parking in front of the, you know, in, in front there. And I think that, that may be something you'd want to think about before you take that action.
And I think I just, I understand, I'd like to kick it around and maybe at an upcoming meeting we discuss that, because I know myself, if you wanted to drop off a couple of letters into the mailbox, it's kind of a safety issue, somebody, I see people always trying to take a look to see how close the traffic's coming to them. I mean, I don't know if there was a configuration that we could come up with and possibility maybe accommodate all these, but. maybe accommodate all needs, but maybe for a future, Mr. Chairman, when Mike Newhouse gets back, maybe an agenda item to maybe have a discussion on it, and I'd be favoring doing something in that area. You know, personally, I'm just one member of the Board, I really believe if we, you know, I'd be in favor of eliminating the 15 minutes in front of that, moving it, and I think we'd move the traffic a lot faster, or maybe at a certain time or date, I don't know. I just thought I'd mention it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe asking, just to, the post, the, with the general post, post office there, master about if there's any ideas that he could give back to us also?
Sure.
And then we can have a discussion, see what he writes back.
And if the police chief or any of the offices in the department might have ideas in traffic flow?
Yeah, the post general there, usually, yeah, usually, he'll give, come out and give an opinion.
Okay.
I know, just in private mailboxes, he will come out and visit and feed back to the, you know, the post officer. Lou?
Mike?
Kids are back in school, so that means that the buses are out on the roads, and the kids are waiting for buses in the mornings, so I just want to reiterate probably what the Public Safety people have already said, is just please be careful out there in the mornings and in the afternoons. We had a great summer here in Wilmington, and I'm excited about the sixth-grade essay contest, I hope that the school department participates in that, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes in. The flu shots, go get your flu shots, please, and I wanted to express appreciation to you, Mr. Kyra, for acting on the Board's behalf, I think it was probably somewhat, came out of my recommendation or request, anyway. I was unable to be at the last Selectman meeting in August, but it was during, in that meeting that you had read the letter from our legislative representatives on behalf, with regards to the expansion of the recycling bill, and that was exactly what I needed, I needed to get a better understanding of the pros and cons, and the pluses and minuses, and I felt very comfortable with how that all transpired, and I appreciate you taking that action on our behalf.
I guess that's it, I have no business.
The dates?
Yep, the dates, yep.
Just to mention that on September 19th, which is not listed there, we are going to do a second cleanup, the cleanup on Saturday, there were 18 people who showed up during that rainstorm, six at the town forest who didn't start at Whitfield, and 12 others. And I also want to give great credit to all of those who came in, to Joe Langone and his crew, who was out during the week working on the cleanup. We are going to implement the rain date, although there was, you know, a great deal of litter that was picked up, and the rain date is next Saturday, and the public, again, is invited to participate with the Conservation Commission and staff, Saturday, September 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I'd appreciate very much if that could get some publication in the newspapers, thank you very much, and they will again meet at the Whitfield School. On September 24th, the Junction Route 93 Development Area Task Force meeting will be held, not at the library in Andover as listed, but today, we got notification, they've changed the location. So it'll still be in Andover, but it will now be at the Andover School Committee Room, which is located in the senior center on Woodya Court, which is right off of Chestnut Street. It's on the second floor, and it's the school committee room, which is, again, a part of the school administration over in Andover, located at the senior center at Woodya Court, right off of Chestnut Street. I'll remind folks that September 27th is the 5th Annual Happy Birthday Road Race, which is conducted by race director Tom Pizera, with his very energetic staff of volunteers and the cooperation of the bank. They have, and someone helped me with the name of the bank that is right across the street from...
Reading Co-op?
Reading Co-op, the Reading Co-op Bank, I apologize to them for not having that at the tip of my tongue, but the Reading Co-op Bank has been great in terms of their support for this program, and for those people who are interested in running, there's information, I know, available on the website, or they can call our office, and we can let them know, but Tom Pizera, the race director, can let folks know as well. The proceeds have gone to scholarships and to the community fund and to other worthwhile endeavors in the town of Wilmington, and they've been quite successful in the past, and I expect will continue to be successful in the future. The members of the Board of Selectmen are all invited to be there at the awards ceremony if they'd like to make presentations to the winners.
You don't have to run, right?
You don't have to run, you don't have to run. The Harvest Festival at the Hyndon Tavern will also be on that date from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And finally, some people have expressed some interest, Mr. Chairman, in knowing what's happening with the Swain School site, that project went as well as we could possibly have hoped in terms of the work that was done by the contractors, it came in well, well under budget, and it's going to enable us now to remain under budget, but still do the paving and the loam and seed work that we had hoped to do at that location. So we will be doing some paving in the fall, that will be, the prep work will be conducted by our DPW in-house forces, and that will involve the placement of a two-inch base course to the limits that we've established out there for the paving area. In addition, though, we're going to do some loam and seed work, and do that also by DPW in-house forces, where we were going to expand the footprint of the grass area. So you're going to see not only a little more parking there for the schools and for others who use that, and the possibility of improving the drop-off that the school department is looking at in that location, we're also going to expand the grass area, and I, having been out there recently, I can tell you that that's probably going to be a great location for your Fourth of July blanket for the fireworks, we've expanded that. What the ultimate use of that property is, of course, will be up to the Boards and the town of Wilmington. Final paving will be done in the spring, well prior to any Fourth of July and other activities. And that concludes the information, the important dates, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn, second.
On the favor?
Go, Mr. Chairman.